All right, I'd like to call to order the Monday, November 24th, 2025, Mount Lake Terrace Planning Commission meeting to order. Could you please take the roll?
Chair Batista.
Here.
Vice Chair Betcher.
Present.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Stenson.
Commissioner Stenson.
Present.
I do see Commissioner Wu online, but I guess this microphone isn't quite working at the moment.
Oh, excellent, thank you. Um, is that everybody then? Okay. Uh, moving on to item number three, approval of the November 10th, 2025 meeting minutes. Does anybody have any changes or corrections to those? Not hearing or seeing any? Seeing any, we'll go ahead and declare those accepted as presented. Item number four, public comment. Let the record show, there is no public in attendance tonight. Do we have anybody who has either submitted something online or is online right now?
No one has signed up to make comment, and I do not see anyone currently waiting.
Okay, move on to item number five, code compliance update.
Good evening, planning commissioners. This is an update on code compliance since the last presentation with the planning commission. This covers January of this year through the end of October. My name is Laura Stevenson. I've been the code compliance officer for the city since May 2024. That is me in the photo climbing the water tower. Do not ask me to do that again today. This evening, we'll go over case statistics, upcoming work, collaborative efforts, several high-impact cases, and the direction that we're headed. This slide shows from right to left the cases I started with in May of last year, the numbers from our last presentation, and the new figures. As you can see, there have been increases in cases. On the far left, you can see that there have been 383 cases worked so far, and of those, 261 have been closed and 122 remain open. This is a breakdown of the types of cases we typically get. So you can see it's fairly even between building and nuisance violations. Um, there's a lot of overlap, too, but when it comes to like the primary reason for a case, that's how it's kind of divided there. So this is all of the cases open and closed, and then this is all of the cases that are currently open. So as you can see, the building cases are significantly higher. And building meaning typically means that they're missing a permit. The reason that that number is so high for open cases versus cases overall is because before, we would close a case once a permit was issued as a resolution to the violation, but a lot of those permits went stale and were never completed. So now we keep the code cases open until the permits are completely final. This chart was included last time. This is a refresher. It shows the typical progression of a case from the initial violation to the final correction. There's always more than one opportunity and a strong preference on our end for voluntary compliance. Ideally, it's with the first notice, but even if it takes more than one morning notice, there's, you're gonna have at least two opportunities. I worked with our senior permit specialist to create these workflows. I initially made them for myself because I was getting frequent questions about the process, but they're now available to anyone online at the front desk, and I include them with notices involving missing permits. It just takes you through exactly what our steps and process are. Um, I find them helpful. I've also worked with communications, with Sienna, in letting people know when things come up. We have had some trends. Uh, we had two incidences of seniors being scammed by people claiming to be roofers, and within days, we'd put out these tips to avoid contractor scams, and that went out on social media. I think we got the first call on a Tuesday, and with, within less than a week, we had this out. Uh, and then to the right, you could see where we had an increase in reports of rodent issues. Um, this is the printed version in our newsletter. We also posted to social media with some tips on how to avoid rat infestations. Soon, I, we're going to have quarterly public training sessions. We're planning on code compliance specific training for the second quarter, and I will try to keep it down to one session. We'll see. Uh, we've recently refreshed the code compliance policy and procedure manual. It was rewritten with our current processes in mind. Um, it has changed quite a bit since moving from the police department to CED. The focus is a little bit different, but also the, the follow-through is significantly different. You may have noticed that quite a few vehicles are parked on front lawns in some neighborhoods. Rather than writing each violation individually, we're starting with education, first through social media, then through flyers that I have with me today. Sorry, I don't have a digital So these are hot off the press. I, we just kind of got them approved today. Um, the idea is to put the flyers out for people who are violating the code when it comes to how their vehicles are parked on their property, uh, if, if they don't answer the door, obviously, or tape it to their front door, just a way to like give them a friendly warning without actually initiating a code case. So I'll go through some of the high-impact cases that we've had recently. This house has several nuisance violations. Most of what you're seeing actually not violations, but there were several. They were very cooperative. They asked for a little bit of extra time, and two months later, this is the result. This house was, uh, has two code cases. Um, they're both currently closed. The initial code case was due to a raccoon infestation. There was a hole in the roof. Raccoons got in. There was significant damage to the interior of the house, and then it went vacant and got worse. The photo, the larger photo is of my initial visit. The owner rather didn't want to deal with the issues and opted to sell the property. The next owner inherited the code case, and they decided to begin renovation without permits. So then a second code case was started due to that. Both have been resolved. This is the property as of a few weeks ago. Last I checked, it's still up for sale. Because the process can take quite a bit of time, and we wait for those permits to be completed, this was a 16-month process.
You said this is for sale again?
Last I checked, it was for sale.
Okay, so they just flipped it?
No, they didn't flip it. Um, they, they completely renovated it. Oh, you mean in the sense that they didn't live in it?
Yeah.
I believe so.
Okay.
I believe so, yeah. Yeah, 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 significant structural change. Um, okay, and then this property had numerous nuisance violations. They received deadline extensions, but they did not make progress. It actually became worse, and we eventually had to file with Superior Court. This is 18 months later. We had a court order, and they opted to comply rather than have us come in and remove all of the violations, most of which were the vehicles that you saw This property may look familiar. There were issues with an earlier case, so we had to restart. It also went to Superior Court, and a court order required all nuisances to be addressed. Once that order was in place, the owners became very cooperative and communicative. This slide shows the front yard condition before, and this is after the co, the court order and compliance by the owners and their family. So because we had to restart, it took a little bit more time, but it also had to go through the court system. So this is 22 months later. But what we didn't know before, before they started cleaning up, was the condition of the backyard, which was significantly worse. I think you can, you have an idea of the smell, and it, a lot of this was shoulder-high to me. Um, the owners were nice enough to invite me back there to see like what they were dealing with. They asked for a little extra time. They got a little extra time. And this is how it looked a couple of weeks ago.
I'm, I'm curious with the, the front yard picture, the after, um, those stumps? Did, first of all, are they, are they on their property or on the right-of-way?
I'd say they're probably closer to the right-of-way. I believe the intention is to keep cars off of the property since they had to pay so much in towing fees for all the cars in the backyard. They don't want to have to pay to tow more cars.
So people other than themselves are driving onto their property and parking their cars?
There were people, the, so it was the tenants who had all those vehicles.
Oh.
And then the owners of the property, they, there was a whole eviction process.
Gotcha, okay.
And then they had to pay to have the cars towed.
But the tenants are still there?
The tenants are no longer there.
Okay.
At the moment, it's vacant. They are cleaning up the house. I believe they intend on renting it again in the future. Yeah, the logs are temporary. And they, they were actually, so they had, um, they had wood chips dropped off to cover the ground, which is an improvement, trust me. So when, when they dropped off the chips, I believe they dropped off the rounds at the same time. So case numbers are up. Uh, some of our tougher issues, the, the bigger cases are moving forward, and it takes a lot of time for the, uh, the bigger ones, but we're seeing some real improvement in conditions, and it's, it's going in a good direction. Any questions?
Yeah, um, I should have asked this when you were on the first slide. The, uh, the first example that you gave, uh, the before and after, it's kind of hard to tell the after, you know, it's, it's cleaner. Um, is there a sidewalk there that it's just overgrown?
Sorry, one moment. Right here? No, no, no. They put, um, so if you look in the first photo, it's kind of hard to tell. They, they put up fencing, I believe, to keep pets in, and then they removed the fencing.
Gotcha, okay, so there was-
So it's left, it's left some ruts in the lawn there.
Is that on 48th?
Yes, it is.
Okay. The parking strip curbing?
Yes, exactly.
It's the only place in the city that exists. Yikes, that's scary.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of the curb, but it is recognizable.
Last I heard, it's been a good year or two, maybe more, that there was a plan in place to redo that, but I don't, I don't know what happened with that.
I'm not involved with that, but I believe it was done with grant money.
Because I know they pulled out some of the trees that were there as part of it.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, thanks. So I have a question about, um, I know, um, part of this is also ensuring that people get permits in the first place, um, and you had some diagrams that were up there. I'm curious to hear more about sort of your documentation and outreach process for sort of, um, you know, clarifying and educating the public about, uh, permits in Terrace.
I mean, that, if I have one goal, it's to let people know that they need permits ahead of time. Um, I wish it was, I wish it was as simple as me wanting them to know, you know, but we're working on it, and that's part of what we're gonna be doing with our training next year. That's, that's a big part of it. Um, we are going to be working with our communications person, Sienna, on that as well. Um, but there is, the problem is, is that it's not a violation until they do it without permits, right? So when it does happen, we try to accommodate where we can as far as educating when the work is already started. Uh, a lot of times, that involves a stop-work order. I think a big mistake that people make is, well, let me finish this up and then have it inspected. Well, now you ha, might have to tear things out. So if you stop working and you have a, like a gutted frame or something like that, like, good, we can actually proceed with inspections, or, not me, rather, but our team, yeah.
I can speak then a little, a little bit. Matthew Gissel, building official. Um, uh, thank you for the opportunity to come speak once again. Um, so we are, that's one of the things I, instruction before correction, that's one of our big goals. That's how me and Kristi are working together to, um, once a quarter, have a public outreach. So, um, second quarter, when it kind of gets closer to summer, we'll have one with code compliance, because that's when some of the cases go up. Uh, one of the first ones that we're gonna do for the first quarter is just permitting. Permitting education, um, when do you need a permit, how do you apply for it, things of that nature. Um, and with both of those, there will be a PR campaign where we'll be sending out stuff on Facebook and Instagram, so that way, hopefully, we can reach people, um, and have a conversation prior to their house is torn up, and then we have to have a harder conversation. So, uh, instruction before correction is, is always where we're leaning, and, um, that's where a lot of this, um, paperwork has come from, as Laura has reached out to them, and they're like, well, we don't know. So, um, she's been more doing some amazing work with the rest of our permitting department to create, um, instructional paperwork for them to be able to go through, to kind of give them an opportunity to go through the process.
Great. I'm glad that you're working forward on that. Um, if I had a recommendation, I would also suggest maybe a little audit of the website and confirming that, like, all the permits are described on it, and that there are links to each of the, um, types of permits that are required, like, for example, roofing. Um, I have an anecdote I can share later. Um, but, um, like, it's good to hear that you're sort of collectively looking at this as kind of an education outreach. I think that's pretty important here, so.
Yeah, one of the, one of the big things we do is we always assume pure intent. So, um, that, that, we're here to serve, and so even if someone goes out of bat at the wrong way, we're gonna he, help them through the process as best as we can, um, to give them the tools to be successful. But, um, yeah, we're working on updating all of our applications. Uh, we're working at, updating our FAQ page, uh, to make sure that people, if they have questions, are aware. But with communicating, most of the time, it's a contractor telling them that they didn't need a permit. So we, we can't do too much about that, um, but we're trying to spearhead that to get it before they reach out to contractors to let them know when they need a permit or not, and as we always tell the public, we're here to help you. Um, unfortunately, it might not always seem that way if we're doing it retroactively, but they can always call and ask, and that outreach has worked. We have had a lot of, um, realtors calling, um, when they have homeowners looking at houses to purchase. Hey, does this new kitchen, does this have permits? We can tell them, tell them right away, and, uh, sometimes I even give them around, away my, my cellphone number so that way they can call me, since they kind of work off-hours, um, so that way they're can get all the information to reflect to the possible person applying for that house, if, if, if it's legal or not, or what process might take place if the work was done without benefit of permits. Well, we love it when people invest in Mount Lake Terrace, um, as that one with the, the house that was flipped. Um, you know, they purchased it, they, they didn't start off in the right direction, but once we got in line with the, we all have the same goal, uh, they want a house that's nicer, they can sell. We want a nice house that's safe, that, uh, to invest in the community. So I, I think we're going in the right direction.
Yeah, these all look way safer.
Yeah. Uh, I'd also, I'd add to that, that I would say a year ago, driving around, if you see a roof being done, pull over, like, can I see your permit? I would say over 90%, no permit. You could bet on it. There's no permit. Now, it's more than 50% do have a permit. So it could be that people are learning. It could be that the people who don't want to get permits, uh, aren't trying to take the jobs here, um, the, the quick, easy-money jobs here anymore. Um, but there, we have seen a change, absolutely.
Just checking with our online commissioners. Anybody have any questions for staff?
No questions, just, uh, thanks for the great presentation, and, um, yeah, it looks like we're doing some good work, and I have seen all those things that you're referring to out on, um, uh, Facebook. Uh, in fact, I just recently saw the one of how many people, someone in the community caught, um, working in our community without a license or a permit. So, yeah, thank you for everything you're doing, and, uh, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Chief, I want to let you know that Commissioner Wu has an audio issue, so he's able to hear from the community, so I'm having a chat with him.
Oh, great.
He says, "No questions here, great progress on violations."
Great. Thank you. So I have a, I have a couple of additional questions. Um, so on the flyer that you just handed out, it's cute, by the way, I like the little-
Thank you.
Took, toy cars, it's funny. Um, it talks about gravel, and so it's basically if it's grandfathered in prior to 2006, what is your capability in determining if it actually existed prior to 2006?
Well, without giving away all of our secrets, um, we, we do have Google Earth Pro, so we're able to zoom in. The 2010 view of Mount Lake Terrace is great. So we're able to zoom in, and if in 2010, you didn't have gravel, and today you have gravel, then you didn't have it from 2006 continuously.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, the, the gravel thing, most people don't know about that. They're a little bit surprised to hear about it, but I always bring it up when I'm having a discussion about parking vehicles. Like, if you, if your intent is to put in gravel, you're not allowed to do that. I have had people remove gravel that they've put in after the fact, so, uh, it can be a very time-consuming mistake to make.
Okay. Because I, I can even think, think of one house for sure that, since 2006, the, they expanded their driveway and used gravel. Um, my guess is probably because they were told, hey, you can't have a driveway that wide. Um, and I think that, I think the property actually sold, so the current people who are living there, they didn't do it, and they, they don't, they probably aren't aware of it. So when you're, I'm assuming you probably ju, you're driving around the city a lot, just observing things.
Yes.
Are you kind of keeping an inventory, is, hey, they got a gravel driveway, and then following up, or?
Absolutely not, no. No, I am not looking to, to catch people on that, that's for sure. It's more that it's not a solution to the other issues that are going on. So if you have eight cars on your lawn, you say, well, let me just throw some gravel down, like, well, no, we don't allow that anymore. Um, but I'm not going around looking for fresh gravel to catch people on necessarily. Uh, if I'm there for something else, then it might come up.
Okay. Would that be the same, too, if there's like clear evidence that they had been parking on the grass and they haven't restored it, and so it's still all dirt with tire ruts, you know, going all the way up to sort of the edge of the travel lane, which could cause damage if there's erosion there? Um, is that being sort of actively looked at as well, or is it, you kind of look at it, and it's like you can see in your photos, they've been doing that for decades, and you just kind of let it go?
Uh, I mean, it depends on the situation. If somebody's called in and made a complaint, then I take it, then I'm gonna notice it a little bit more. Um, I'm, I'm there to see whether it's present or not. Um, if I'm just driving by and I see ruts, for example, um, then sure, I'll, I'll take a peek, like, is there a car on the lawn right now? If not, then they might have just backed up a car to unload something. I, I have no evidence to the contrary, so I'm not going to assume that a violation's taking place without any evidence of it other than just ruts.
Okay, that's good to know. I'm just kind of curious for what, so that's a very specific date, July 1st, 2006. What, why is that the milestone date? Is that, was there something?
That's in our code, yeah. There was a code change.
That's when the code was updated. You'd think I would have remembered that.
Yeah, it was not a, after that date is no longer a legal surface.
Okay.
Driving surface. So, um, if your grandfather caused, uh, that's not actually in code, but that's the nomenclature we use, um, then, then you're okay. Um, but as Laura said, if, if during the case, we find out that it was put in after that date, then part of remediating it would be removing that illegally-installed, um, surface.
I would say around that time is when, I do remember we updated some of the code when it came to parking on the grass, because Terrace had a very bad reputation of being known as, the place where cars were up on blocks.
Yeah.
In a lot of yards.
And again, that's why Laura's doing a great job. So this is about instructing before correction. So, um, you know, this, uh, we have a hierarchy of code cases. Um, life safety is always the top. So if there's a work done without benefit of permits, and it's, uh, altering the, uh, the life safety, um, of the building because of the structure, uh, that's gonna be enforced first prior to, um, like you said, maybe roots in a yard. Um, so, but we want to make sure that if we do see that, that we're giving them opportunity to comply, um, prior to creating that code case. So this is a, um, campaign to get, get the information out there so that as we do see things, or as people do, um, bring them in as code requests, that, uh, we can, we have a clear process in letting them know, and then getting it rectified.
So the, I'm kind of curious, on the, one of the photos that you have, sort of the extreme example where, um, you, you know, they clean, you know, you, they cleaned everything up, but you weren't able to see the backyard?
Yes.
And the original part of that. Um, is that, is that because when you're doing the enforcement, you, you can, it's only, has to be like what you're able to see from, like, public property, or was it just, it was just hidden or masked?
Yeah, there's, there's, um, legal limitations to where I'm able to go. So I'm allowed, anything I can view from the right-of-way up to the front door, and then anything I can view on my travel to the front door. So if I'm walking around, and, and sometimes the right-of-way or the public area means that I'm going around a corner, if it's a corner property, but in this case, there, there was no, you couldn't see into the backyard. Um, because of the cars in the front yard, they were blocking the view.
In that case, uh, would you be able to sort of use, uh, because something like, I guess it could accumulate fast, but something like that, that's over time. So in those cases, would, would you be, like, say if you have, you're opening up a case for something that you see in the front yard?
Right.
Are you able to look at that satellite imagery and see if there's anything that's catching your eye in the backyard as well?
Yeah, we're able to use satellite imagery. We're not able to use drones quite yet because the legality of that isn't, we don't know. We don't know, uh, how that's going to shake out. It's in flux at the moment. Um, but as far as satellite imagery, sure. With that one, I believe the tr-
Tree, it looked like there was a tree canopy.
Yeah, there was a canopy, so that it wasn't, you couldn't see it at all.
If, like, say, uh, a neighbor filed the complaint, and they said, hey, can you come out here? And they, it's like, hey, you want to go on my property, and you can clearly see it from my property?
Yeah, so, um, as, we'll, we'll follow all, uh, aspects that we're allowed to by law. Uh, we want to make sure that we're very careful. Um, case law is demonstrated if you find, um, certain- Case law has demonstrated if you find certain information in a non-legal or co-complying way, then it's spoiled fruit and we cannot utilize it in, in the court case. So we make sure that we work with our legal team to make sure that we're following very strict criteria when getting evidence, gaining evidence, and then utilizing that, I think, seeing how many have gone to court and how we have won, has demonstrated that we are very, as Laura said earlier, and if I don't have very strict evidence, then I'm not going to pursue that case. That is how we pursue, to make sure that, we don't want to put something before a judge that would get thrown out. We want to make sure we have a very clear path and how we gain that evidence is very important. So more than happy to give you more of that information, but there are several legalities of when you can take information and when you can't, which unfortunately would take hours for us to go through everything. So, yeah, so it's very nuanced, but I would happy to give you kind of that, that outline that we utilize.
And I, I'm, I'm assuming that, that is some, like the neighbor and I, I see these photos and feel bad for the neighbor. The neighbors of those properties and kind of curious, you know, if maybe they didn't see it or didn't affect them or they just didn't care, but.
We got frequent calls about it, but it takes time.
So I'm, I'm assuming that that is then communicated to the people who are filing the complaint that?
Yeah, a lot of times, like even in this case, the homeowner did not know that the state of the property that had gone in. So they were actually very thankful that co-compliance got involved and that we made them aware because they had not visited the property in quite some time and were very remiss at the state of their property. So, but if someone puts in a code request, then we do follow up unless they do not give us their contact information. So there are times that they bring something to the front desk, they have pictures, they have an address and we don't know who it came from. Unfortunately, when that's the case, we can't really follow up with, with anyone. But I think if they look in their backyard and see the final result, then they, they know that there was action taken.
And then the other question I had on, you kind of gave an example, sort of the percentage breakdown of the types of cases that you have. There was a real small sliver that was sort of, that was titled like zoning.
Yes.
Can you give, can you give a brief example of what would fall, like zoning and planning, what, what would fall under that? Cause usually when I think of zoning and planning, I think of, you know, that's sort of the pre-development stage and something actually hasn't happened yet versus the actual building where they're doing it. They're doing it and they just don't have the permit.
Yeah, weirdly, these, more clo- more accurately would be described as environmental.
Oh, okay.
Which would be part of the, the zoning code. This usually has to do with people clearing vegetation when they're not supposed to clear vegetation.
Okay.
I would say all but one of the cases that were zoning planning had to do with either a critical area or somebody, that, that's really what it is, removing vegetation where you're not supposed to move, remove vegetation.
Gotcha. Okay, that makes more sense.
Yeah, we try to break it down by which code is responsible for that violation. So critical areas, steep slopes, when those, that, that's part, we put that into zoning.
And I'm, I'm assuming it's probably happening a lot, but maybe it's only 3% here too as well, because a lot of that's usually going to be in somebody's backyard with a high, a lot of tree canopy and you're, it's not, you don't always see it, you don't, you don't realize it's, it's happened?
I think it has more to do with the volume of the other cases being so much bigger. And again, sometimes you'll have overlap with zoning issues, but usually those are more standalone versus the building or permit and then the nuisance violations.
Okay.
Which a lot, you'll see, I would say about a quarter of the cases overlap quite a bit, like a lot.
Yeah, I'd say like a, a case where someone's renovating the property to sell it, a lot of times it's, they're doing work on the house and they removed some trees and disturbed a steep slope, things of that nature. So the code case would involve all three of those. And then they have to pull the permits and, and go through that process and reestablish the, the native of whatever they disturbed.
I have a question about your parking standards thing that you're going to start looking at next year. Can you describe for me how it's different now or upcoming versus kind of what you've been doing? Like, we have those same rules, right?
Yeah, I, there, there's definitely, there are things that we'll focus on. Like in the springtime, you're, you're going to see a lot of permit stuff going on. Same goes for right before the rainy season, you'll see roofers come out of the woodworks. When it comes to vehicles on lawns, it's so prevalent that most cases don't get written up for that unless it's more than a few. So I would say three or more is usually where I'll stop and, and have a conversation. If it's less than that, it's so prevalent that if, if there's nothing else going on on the property, it typically won't trigger a code case. If there's other stuff going on, then I try to cover the big bases as much as possible. So if you have something else going on in your property that's triggered a code case, then the vehicles, yeah, they need to get off the lawn as well.
Do you have a sense of how much more enforcement this will be compared to previous enforcement?
Don't have a clear idea yet. I think the first step is to see how effective this is before moving on to enforcement. Hopefully this has some good effect on it, but, and it won't be like a tragically large volume that we'll be looking at.
Yeah, so my concern here is that recently in our zoning code update, we limited the size of the driveway to what I think might be pretty restrictive. Like it went down from 24 feet wide to 16 feet wide and we talked about from 12 feet wide. So like, I think the combination of, you know, this, you know, very prevalent condition combined with our now possibly oddly restrictive driveway widths is going to cause a lot of problems, a lot of complaints. So I think that's something that we as a commission kind of need to take a look at and possibly work with you all to see how prevalent these things are, like get an idea of like, you know, how much is this new driveway width going to be problematic? So for example, I was talking to my neighbor who, you know, has kind of a horseshoe driveway that's made of gravel and she wanted to make it like a, like more of a paved driveway and she was her surprise to hear that, you know, we don't allow two driveways and that the width of the driveway total is now 16 feet for every 60 feet or whatever. So I think these things might come as a bit of a surprise. I'd also like to see if we have some data on these kind of things and maybe some additional conditions so that we have an idea of the size of the problem, because I think with the recent zoning code update, like a lot of these numbers I feel like are kind of preliminary. Like we need to get an idea of what the sense of, you know, the impact of them is before like we can say that they're good numbers or not. And this is like a prime case of like, you know, is this a number that we've set in the zoning code that is unreasonable or is it good? So I think that's some really valuable information you all can provide to us that will help us.
Yeah. Yes, you're correct. That's one of the reas- the long game of educating the public. As you know, with middle housing and our housing action plan moving forward and our rezoning, density is a priority set by the state. So in even some of our areas, no parking will be required. So as we're looking at density, as we're looking at basically requiring to reduce those parking areas, we want to make sure that we educate the pub, educate the public where they can park. Cause what we don't want is the new developments that are going in that are meeting that state mandated guidelines to increase the density, parking on those unapproved surfaces. So making sure that they know that, as well as you also know, with each parcel being able to have basically four units on it, a duplex with two ADUs, you just increased the populace on that individual lot by three and there's no, we're not allowed to require more parking. So we want to make sure that we're looking at it holistically, that they know where they can park and, you know, the big push is to get people out of their car to utilize the mass transit system. So we, we have to work with the codes that we have and one of the big things that we're trying to, again, instruction before correction, how can we make sure that people are aware of these codes? So that way as they're planning for future development, as they're planning on putting that ADU back in the yard, that they're not planning on parking on unapproved surface as they're moving forward.
Yeah, and if the amount of unimproved, amount of improved surface we allow is like restrictive, like I know, I think this is an excellent test case because I think you all are generally pro act, like it's not like you're coming and being the building police and writing tickets for the sake of tickets, like you work with people to try and like come up with a solution. And so I'd be really interested to find out like, you know, what kind of solutions you're finding, if you're running up against some issues, like, you know, I want to hear about the cases where there are failures, that kind of thing. Because I think like, and you know, the more soft we can sort of make this landing, I think the better, because if we come up with like a hard enforcement and, you know, a lot of people are suddenly no longer able to live in these properties they've lived in for 70 years in the way that they have, I think that is a failure. That's like a, a failure condition that like will cause a lot of complaints and kind of undermine the legitimacy of what we are trying to do. So I think, you know, this is important work that will help us solidify these kind of things and I would like to hear more about this rollout as we go forward, because I think we'll have to update some numbers.
Happy to bring you that information.
And one, one more question, just kind of reading through this, the parking standards, there's a mention of tensor canopies are not allowed for vehicle storage. That's regardless of whether it's in the front yard, side yard or backyard?
Correct.
Okay. Can it go in the backyard?
Yeah, if it's, if it's visible, yeah. I mean, one of the great things about kind of doing an instruction before correction is it gives the opportunity, an opportunity to be heard as well if they want to come to council meetings or planning commission, as they want to, if you want to look at amending or adjusting some of these code criterias, we're happy to make those adjustments as needed. But again, we have, have to make sure that the public's aware about them and then we have to enforce them as they're adopted.
Okay, just one last check with our online commissioners. Questions, comments?
No.
Alrighty then, thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, great presentation.
All right, looks like we're ready for item number six, director's report.
Hello, Commissioner. Hello, Commissioner. I am not Christie, as I said previously, but I am very blessed and honored to be here today in her stead. So a couple of updates. The housing action plan that you were so critical in amending and helping us have a final nice product to bring to city council, is going to have a public hearing and it's, hopefully it's final action December 4th. I want to thank a planning commission again for their instrumental instruction as we got to a good final draft on that. And then there's also the critical areas and floodplain management updates that will have a public hearing and on December 18th. And then a little slight staff update, Tom Morley, if you're familiar, he's worked for the city of Mount Lake Terrace for 26 years. This is his last week. He is, he is retiring and moving on. We are currently interviewing for that position and hope to have that filled prior to his final absence. So just three small points and, thank you.
What, what, what was his position?
He was the construction inspector.
Sure, he stayed busy with all those illegal flips too.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He was, he was instrumental in, in letting us know sometimes and then also making sure that they, they got going. So Tom, Tom's dedication and service have left a lasting impact on our community. The developers knew him very well as, you know, he was, he was instrumental with all departments across the board and made sure that the expectations of City Mount Lake Terrace were met out in the field, so.
Alrighty, and is that it for the director's report?
That is it, correct.
Okay, move on to item number seven, miscellaneous business by call of planning commissioners. Anybody have any miscellaneous business? Vacation, absences? We gen- if we don't have business, we generally end up canceling that last meeting of the year because it usually falls really close to the holidays. Hopefully we'll get some clarification if, if we're going to be doing that or not and let everybody know. We'll see. So I haven't, I don't, I'm not aware of anybody requesting any, so it's not a core mission, it's just more of a workload issue, so if we don't have anything pressing, we might just end up canceling, so.
Your last miss- your last commission, plan, sorry, your last meeting of the year is going to be on the 22nd.
Okay.
Right.
So yeah, hopefully.
The Monday of Christmas.
We'll, we'll have an update for you before, before then. All right, so not hearing any other miscellaneous, but you got any?
Oh, thanks for coming in Thanksgiving week.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks for coming in.
All right, not hearing or seeing any other miscellaneous business, so I'll go ahead and declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.